Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for April 25, 2022. And a motion going to executive session to discuss YCT contractual negotiations under the Taylor law.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Oh, can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Good evening, welcome to Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for April 25, 2022. We please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Fiona Michael Anednon.
And at the conclusion of the pledge of allegiance, I ask that everyone remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in Yorktown who have lost loved ones, especially the mother of our board president Jackie Carbone, the mother-in-law of Mike Rosen, and the mother-in-law of Rosemary Brandigan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It was wonderful to have students leading the pledge finally again. And we have good news back in the house, which is the best news we've had in three years. So I will turn it over to you, Dr. Hatter.
This will be my favorite board meeting to date. It is so wonderful to see so many students here. It is just wonderful to see the collaboration that's happening. My thanks to Mr. DeGeneres and Dr. Roberts and their teams in the schools for really creating such a special partnership between Kivell Land and our engineering students. And I really appreciate, first of all, our students in Ms. Kivell's class for participating and just coming to this work with just such joy and such a love for learning. It's been so inspiring to see. And to our high school engineering students, you're a special group, and I really appreciate what you have done for our students at Crampon. I've had the opportunity to come in and visit. Travis, I've seen you especially leading a group of students, and it really is inspiring to see. So for the students in Mr. Bronzy's class, and Mr. Bronzy, thank you for your leadership and everything that you've done. For the students in the engineering class and in our engineering program, thank you, because I think our Crampon students learn more than just engineering. At this time, I would typically introduce someone to the podium, but we're going to start a little bit differently today. I would introduce either a student or one of our administrators.
Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. O'Shea, and the members of the Board of Education. I am Jack, your mooster ceremonies for the evening. You're probably wondering why we are singing and doing our awesome dances about cows and giving you a container of milk. But the best has yet to come. We have much more in stock for you. Relax, enjoy your milk, and now we will have a word from our Crampon principal, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I love this room.
So I will begin. Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. O'Shea, Mr. Cole, Mrs. Carbone, and Board of Education trustees. We are honored to be sharing a joint good news between Crampon Elementary School and Yorktown High School. What an absolute honor to be bringing good news back to our Board of Education meetings and to share with my dear friend and colleague, Mr. DeGeneres. This year, Mrs. Adele Kivell, Mrs. Amanda Burns, Mr. John Bronzy, and Mrs. Kivell's fourth graders, along with the engineering students who work side-by-side with Mr. Bronzy, have collaborated to consider how to sustain and protect the environment. Their work was a true example of project-based learning, whereby our teachers created student-centered learning to guide students to develop knowledge and understanding by actively participating in real-life challenges and problems. Their inquiry about the world around us centered on applying an empathetic lens using the principles of E-steam to think beyond the walls of the classroom and consider, how can I, how can we collaborate to make a positive impact on the lives of others, ultimately taking care of our environment? Tonight demonstrates how we continually consider ways to foster divergent thinking, promote opportunities for our students to think deeply about challenges faced by others, and most importantly, remember the essence of good character and citizenship as they prepare for an ever-changing world. We pride ourselves in thinking outside the box while providing our students with innovative opportunities to wonder, to collaborate, and to consider ways to expand their learning and curiosity. I ask all of us to reflect on the following question: How does project-based learning through the lens of E-steam push our students to consider ways to promote change? So I'm going to repeat that question one more time. How does project-based learning through the lens of E-steam push our students to consider ways to promote change? I do have an answer, a part of an answer. It is thinking in ways that are new and different. It is imagining innovations and solutions that have never existed before. It is going beyond the walls, beyond the paths that lead to known destinations, and carving out uncharted paths to these unknown destinations. It is leading with our hearts to make positive changes. The opportunities are endless for creativity and change. Authentic student learning experiences facilitated by innovative educators such as Mrs. Adele Kivell, Mr. John Bronzy, and Mrs. Amanda Burns are true examples of our district mission statement and core beliefs in action. Before we showcase this collaborative work between Crampon Elementary School and Yorktown High School, please join me in welcoming my dear friend and colleague, the principal of Yorktown High School, Mr. Joseph DeGeneres.
Roberts. Well done, as always. Good evening, Board of Education President, Mrs. Carbone, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Hatter, and members of the district administrative team. Always nice to be here and nice to be back here for good news and share the great news and the collaboration between Yorktown High School and Crampon School. I'd like to thank Yorktown High School School Counselor, who's here tonight, and also the teacher leader, Mrs. Servini, Mrs. Kivell, Dr. Roberts, Mr. Bronzy, and of course, the wonderful students in both schools for their vision, willingness, and successful implementation of this initiative. I'd like to recognize the growth of our science program, both inside and outside of the classroom, a wide-range selection of mandated and elective courses at Yorktown High School, science research, robotics, and engineering clubs, and our multiple engineering courses. When you start a program, you look for a teacher who has passion, knowledge, and the ability to market the program and then certainly expand it. Mr. Bronzy has been the perfect choice, and I'd like to acknowledge him publicly. And certainly acknowledge all of you on stage tonight who give us the support and the resources to do our job and expand our programs. And thank you, parents, for providing wonderful Crampon students who have enjoyed coming to the high school, I believe, because it seems like it, they even dance in the aisles, and our high school students also, who really enjoy working with the younger students. They're terrific role models, our high school kids, and they look forward to their work collaborating with the younger students, our future science students. And now it's an honor for me to introduce Mrs. Kivell. Thank you.
Hi. So I'm going to start with talking about the journey, how does something like this happen? So it all started with cows, but did it? We actually were entertaining the idea when cows appeared on the Discovery Dairy website, and that is the beauty of PBL and E-steam. In order to understand how something like this can happen, we need to understand how to infuse PBL, E-steam, and SEL into the curriculum. The driving force behind this pedagogy and educational approach is not the design, it's not what technology we use. The driving force is twofold. It's the empathy, the relationship the students make with their idea and the real-life connection. It's the connection that motivates the students to create change. It is in these relationships with their real-world problem that makes all the difference and encourages students to be that change in the world. Secondly, and most importantly, it is in the collaboration. A project like this cannot be successful without collaborating on so many levels. We had student-to-student collaboration, teacher-to-teacher, student-to-teacher, teacher-to-tech, tech-to-administration, and on and on and on to make tonight happen, and that's what it's all about. Once we settled on the idea to help the dairy farmers, we needed to isolate the problem, and there were many. Though, through the research, the students in their collaborative groups defined the most important ideas for their group, and thus the beginning of six new ideas on how to save the cows or remedy the life of the dairy farmer. As we began to develop and create our designs through ELA, math, science, geography, and social studies, yes, addressing all the standards in those subject areas, we realized we reached a wall. We needed the connection to a real dairy farmer. Our connection began with a dairy farmer in Tennessee, Mrs. Veronica Steer. I'd like to introduce Ms. Steer right now. She'll be there.
Hey there. I'm Veronica Steer, and I am a dairy farmer in Tennessee, and I have been working with Ms. Adele's fifth-grade class since October. I am actually a distant cousin of one of her students, Nola, and so I have been teaching the fifth-grade class all about dairy farming, all about dairy cows. These cows here in the background, these are Jerseys. We are out on grass at the moment. And so I've been teaching the class about how these cows convert green grass into that glass of milk that you drink, trying to understand where their food comes from. All of my cows are registered, which means that we know who their mother and their father is. So we've talked a little bit about ancestry, about history of the cows. I'm a fifth-generation dairy farmer. I farmed with my parents. I'm going to flip the camera around so you can see a little bit more about the cows. We've talked a lot about the weather, how important the weather is, not just about what's going on here on my farm, but what's going on in other areas of the country. We have an abundance of rainfall here. I have friends in other parts of the country that don't get hardly any rain, and it makes a big difference on our farms. So Mrs. Adele's class is going to talk to you, share with you some of their stories and things that they have learned about dairy farming, about cows, what they've enjoyed, and also about their inventions, things that might be able to help me out on my farm. I apologize about the wind. I don't have any control over Mother Nature. It's one of our oldest cows on the farm. She's 10 years old. Trying to walk very quickly back up to the barn to show you a little bit more of the cows. But we've talked about everything from sickness, how a calf has very little immunity when she's born. We've talked about, of course, the weather is a big topic. We've talked about feed. We've talked about how hard it is for me to take care of a cow because she can't talk. She can't tell me what's going on inside of her. She has four stomachs. She converts grass into milk every day, other feed products as well. So what I do is, while I'm out here working, if I see something that I think is interesting, just take my phone out, make a quick video, send it to the class, and then they send me questions back so we can further understand and explain what we're talking about. This is my free stall barn, so the cows can freely come in and out of this barn. They have mixed feed that they get up at the feed bunk, and I'll be getting ready to harvest one of our crops here soon. They can freely go in and out of this stall. We talk about waste. We get a lot of waste from these cows. Goes down into my lagoon. We recycle that lagoon water back onto our fields to grow crops. So I have been trying to teach these students where their food comes from, what it's like to care for animals. They're cute. They all have a story to tell. They're all very special to me, and I really enjoy being able to teach someone who has never seen a cow a little bit about what I do every day. One of the things that they're going to be discussing with you is about tornadoes, because I have talked a lot about how close some of the tornadoes have come to our farm. So they asked me to just make you a quick video showing you some of the cows, introducing I think that the future of your community is great. I am so impressed with what these fifth graders have come up with, the questions they ask. I think Mrs. Adele is a wonderful teacher who has really opened the eyes of these students to a whole different experience. And isn't technology fantastic to where I am 1,000 miles away, and yet I can teach anyone about dairy farming, show you what goes into every single day of taking care of these cats? Thanks.
So as the connection developed and deepened, we continued to learn so much about the life of the dairy farmer and the cows. We actually love the cows. We all want a pet calf, don't we? We keep saying yes. She didn't get a chance to show you the calves, but they're so cute, we wanted to take one home. Didn't know if the parents would like that too much, though, so we kind of passed on that. So this motivated the children to work harder and harder in designing their ideas. We learned that our first idea didn't work because we did not know enough about dairy farmers and the cows. Yes, we researched, but we did not have the real-life connection to a cow and a farmer. As we spoke to Veronica through letters and videos each day, we learned more and more about the problems and about all the cows. However, we reached another wall. If we wanted our designs to reach a new level so we could send these creations to the Dairy Farmers Association for review, we needed assistance, professional assistance and equipment. Upon consulting with Mrs. Servini, she suggested we meet with the high school engineering team. So I reached out to Mr. Bronzy, and the rest is history. This collaboration has been phenomenal. It is a memory that all involved will never forget, and I know this experience has opened the door in creating many future scientists, engineers, and architects. I would like to introduce Amanda Burns, whose collaboration with me and the children played a huge part in this PBL unit. Thank you.
I am honored to speak on behalf of the technology that has always played a popular role when you enter the room of Kivell Land. Not only do the students use their Chromebooks frequently, but they have many different technologies that have helped enhance their projects, including iPads, green screens, Legos, and specifically this year they piloted an innovative technology called Littlebits, which is a collection of modular electronics that snap together with small magnets for prototyping and learning. When you step into Kivell Land and what you will see tonight in the students' projects, technology is not the first thing you will notice, but rather the incredible learning and creating that is happening with it. Mrs. Kivell and I have always had the approach to set them free and see what they can create with the many tech tools provided. I am beyond proud of how the students always rise to the challenge and design some really incredible innovations. I would now like to introduce Mr. John Bronzy to talk more about our collaboration with the high school students.
Good evening. It's a lot warmer up here than it is in my car when I practice. So thank you. I want to thank the Board of Ed for your support in this endeavor. It's been a great, it's been a great time. Thank you to Dr. Hatter and Ms. O'Shea for your support, Mr. DeGeneres, Dr. Roberts. It was great, your patience with this, because when we scheduled this meeting, field trips were not a thing, but you had the foresight and the patience to see this through, so thank you guys so much for that. Mr. Miller, Ms. Forsberg isn't here, but the technology available to us and to the students is cutting-edge stuff. The software which caused some of the issues really was incredible. Ms. Kivell, thank you so much for your inspiration, you kiddos just inspire me, my family, my, each of my children now at the dinner table, as I'm telling them what we're doing, they want to sponsor a different animal. Because, well, I want to do a cow. And I, well, I don't really like cows. I want to do a lion. Well, if he gets to pick, what about, what can I help make the life better? So it's, you've, you've started something, so thank you guys for that. Mr. Miller, I think I mentioned too, and Ms. Servini for getting the ball rolling. But my, my real task up here, I just want to take a couple minutes and just talk about something other than engineering, because these students face things beyond this initial problem. We hit a roadblock in our technology that Ms. Forsberg and the tech department battled through. You would think renewing an infinite perpetual license with Autodesk would be simple, but it wasn't the case. But she was after it, she was tenacious, and she got it through. But that created a challenge for our high school students, a challenge that nobody foresaw. But we hit a time crunch, and I've worked with teens up where I live, and we've talked about dealing with challenges and sufferings, and you have like two options, really. You can embrace and endure those challenges, or you can escape and eliminate. And I think our world tries to get us to escape and eliminate some of these things, you know? Whatever the media is. And our children came up against this time crunch challenge, because they had the opportunity to share software, and you'll see our laser cutter and the work it can do and the precision that it cuts with, and the 3D printer that it's able to model these things and bring it to life. It's incredible. But without that software as a keystone, we were at a roadblock. And our tech department got it up and running, but then they were faced with the end of the quarter and spring break, and they had exams, they had papers, they had work to get in, but they endured, and you embrace the challenge, and I am so impressed with you guys, because they had it out. I mean, they had it out, and I wouldn't have blamed them. They could have eliminated it, they could have escaped it, and I wouldn't have blamed it, but they endured. And that speaks volumes to your character that Dr. Roberts had spoke about. This goes beyond just engineering. So you guys have impressed me, and you saw what you had the opportunity to provide these young students, and you did it, and you're doing it, and it's impressive. You'll see works that are still in progress, but these individuals at the high school I could not be more proud of, because they have shined so brightly. So I want to thank you guys for that. It's, it was, it's incredible, so you guys got to hang your hats on that. And I got to thank Travis as well, and he's going to come up here, and as he's coming up here, I want to throw something out there, because I, you guys are incredible. You're going to be on this campus next year, and I don't know if the Board of Ed would approve this, but I think you're ready to jump into that design room next year. Just one period a day, I'm all, that's all I'm asking with these kiddos, because they are ready. And they may not approve that, so you'll be in great hands with our tech department at the middle school, but I am really looking forward to continuing to work with you guys here, and can't wait to get you in that classroom and see what you guys design in the future. So thank you guys so much. Thank you guys, the high school students. As Travis comes up here, he's our leader here, and he's been fearless and tenacious as well, getting this stuff done. So thank you guys, and thank you all very much.
My name is Travis. I'm currently a junior, and I'm the founder and president of the engineering club here at YHS. Ever since its start, the club has been trying to discover ways in which we could help both our district and community. Working with Ms. Kivell's class has been an excellent way to do that. The club members and I take great joy in working with students in Ms. Kivell's class and seeing their incredible ideas at such a young age. We first met with the students over Zoom in early February to discuss how we could help them with a project. They proposed their cow project and shared their many inventions of how they could help to improve the lives of cows. We discovered that it would be very, would be difficult to complete this project over Zoom, so the students decided to visit the high school. We broke into groups and worked one-on-one with the students and discussed how we could improve their inventions. In my group, we worked on an invention of designing a cow elevator for, during tornadoes. As we will demonstrate, the elevator is a prototype to bring cows underground in times of natural disaster. Chris Capolo and I brainstormed ideas to find ways in which we could improve their design and work out some of the technical issues they were encountering. With that, we developed a modified design of their invention in a computer program called Inventor. Inventor is a 3D modeling software we utilize in Mr. Bronzy's class. We laser cut the design, and this was the final product here. In addition, we wrote the code in RobotC, which is another program we use in Mr. Bronzy's class, to program the buttons and motors for the design. It was an amazing experience to work with these students, and the engineering club and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to work with Ms. Kivell and her students and look forward to continuing in this project. The club will continue to seek other ways, such as this, to assist our district and community. I would like to thank Mr. DeGeneres for the opportunity to form the club, as well as Mr. Bronzy for continuing to support us and serving as our advisor. I would also like to thank Ms. Kivell for the opportunity to work with her students. And finally, I would like to thank all the club members and everyone that continues to help make the engineering club a success, and for the opportunity to address the Board of Education this evening. Thank you. I would like to bring up Jack.
We use the engineering design process when we create. The first thing we do is The first thing we do is define the problem, then we imagine, we plan, we create, we test, we improve, and then we share. The Kivellanders will first explain their problem, then I will invite you down to the table to listen, observe and ask questions about our inventions. Now everyone will talk about their engineering design problems, and while you're hearing these problems, we want you to think about how we all need to save the cows, because they make most of the food we eat, like yogurt, milk, ice cream, cheese and much more. In Kivelland this year, we felt it was very important to save the cows. The first of the six groups I'm going to introduce is the Tornado Shelter Calf Hutch Group.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Our names are Emma and Sophia. Have you ever wondered what happens to calves' hutches during a storm? Well, we are about to tell you what happens and how we can fix it.
Baby calves don't have quite sturdy hutches, and the farmer might lose some calves, which is very sad.
We might also have some calves with severe wounds, which wouldn't be good.
The hutch is made of a very thin type of wood. That is the reason why they're not so sturdy.
We researched that having an unstable hutch can lower the percentage of the cow's survival.
If the farmer loses their calves, they may have less money, since they get their money from milking them.
Which is why we have invented the Calavator Underground Bunker 2.0. You will get to see it in a little while. Also, here is the animation to our invention. Thank you.
Now I would like to introduce the second group, the Bottle Bucket Invention.
Hello, Board of Education. I'm Owen.
And I'm Annalise. We research, we are making inventions to help Brown's cows, and we are doing this to help dairy farmers and make their lives easier. We researched that it is hard for Brown's calves to transition from bottle to bucket.
The farmer of the calves can't always give them a bottle, because that, they can't always be right next to the calf to feed the bottle to them. It is hard for the calf to lap up the milk from the bucket, so they like to drink from a bottle instead.
You will see a demonstration of our invention in a little while, but first, this is our animation. Enjoy.
Now it's time to introduce John and Michael with the Spectacows Glasses Creation.
Hello, my name is John.
And my name is Michael.
We all know where our milk comes from, but we don't think of our beloved dairy cows as in danger.
But that's the truth. With our group, we researched a problem for our cows, which is called depeatum lucidum, which causes day eyesight to be terrible, but it allows the cows to see greatly at night. This makes everyday activities, such as grazing and getting milked, very difficult. So we need to help our cows so they can see better to do these activities.
With our invention, we can help our cows see better at both day and night. This will allow our cows to have an easier life in the comfiest way possible. So now you have seen our problem, it's time to see our solution. Shortly, you'll see a demonstration on our invention, which will be called Spectacows Glasses. But first, this is our animation. We hope you enjoy it.
Now I would like to introduce my very own group, the Milking Spa Creation.
Hello, I'm Leila. Did you, did you ever wonder how much milk cows actually make? When cows are milked, they produce seven gallons of, of milk a day. But when milking, most cows get really stressed. That stress makes it so cows produce much less milk than they actually can. Our research shows that if cows are relaxed, then they can produce 14 gallons of milk. That's double the amount. So how do we make them relaxed? Jack and Nola will tell you all about our invention, the Milking Spa, in a little while, but first, it's time to watch our short animation.
Now we will show you the Foot Rot and the Cow Scanolation Invention, brought to you by Drew and Anthony.
Hello, my name is Anthony.
And I am Drew. We researched a problem about the cows, and I'll explain a little about it. Our problem is that foot rot farmers have lots of problems trying to identify foot rot. It takes about seven days for them to realize it. This foot rot can go up to their legs and cause them to limp. This is caused, this is caused by severe pain in their hooves. The foot rot can also spread throughout other calves if they're close to each other. This is not good for the cows, because cows can weigh about 1,000 pounds and will make it hard for them to stand up.
And cows can get fevers with foot rot, which causes them to not eat as much food, have nervousness, weakness, weight shifting that causes unhealthy milk. You may be thinking these problems sound bad, but that's why we have a solution for this. This is also known as a cow scanolation, which you will hear about more in a little while. But first, here is our animation.
Now I would love to introduce the very last group, the Happy Heifer Home Creation.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Silvana. Have you ever wondered what happens to cows when they're older? Well, you're about to find out. The problem we researched is that dairy cows around the age of four to six get sent to slaughter once they stop producing as much milk, nor, though they can normally live up to 20 years. We are fixing this problem by making a retirement home for cows called the Happy Heifer Home, which you will get to see soon. Farmers can send their dairy cows here instead of sending, sending them to slaughter. Now we're going to show you our animation of the Happy Heifer Home.
So now you know how important it is to save the cow and help the dairy farmers. We are truly committed to this cause because we love the cows. We've been talking and watching Miss Steer's cows in Tennessee. We've made a strong connection to the cows, and we love them and want the best for them. Did you know we also have a cow that motivates our writing, Sizzle the Cow? Nola, who by the way, we named a calf after on Miss Steer's farm, will come and explain the love to the stuffed animal cow and how it makes learning fun. And now to introduce my friend, Nola.
We tweet about a stuffed animal cow named Sizzle every night in power slides, and it improves our writing a lot. Some of the topics we talk about are where in the world is Sizzle, and we also do Sizzle in books and movies. Now to introduce Sizzle.
Lastly, we really enjoyed working with the High School Engineering Club. We were all inspired by them and very grateful for them to help us make our projects come alive. They helped us and welcomed us. Fun fact, did you know that milk is very good for you, because it makes your bones stronger? So make sure to drink it or eat dairy three times a day, and you will be helping the dairy farmers and the cows. I invite you to go down to the tables and look at our phenomenal inventions that we worked on with the High School Engineering Club. See you soon at our tables.
So at this time, I would invite our members of the Board of Education here to go down and take a look at these student projects. And thank you so much to our student presenters. I can't wait to see some of the products that you've made.
I just want to, this was a wonderful way to bring back good news, and you know what? We call ourselves a district of character, and this is exactly what it encompasses from head to toe, so thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. That was so impressive, and the design thinking that, that I saw was amazing, but even beyond that, the collaboration, to see Crompond students working with high school students in such a meaningful way is really impressive. But even your animations and all the work that went into your animations, please know that I noticed, we noticed, and were really impressed by the animations, the design, the finished products. I saw your code, many of you had code that you had written as part of your work, and that's really, really impressive. Wow, you're in Crompond. I can't wait to see what you do in middle school. And parents, I'm not rushing it. We'll enjoy the rest of fifth grade year in Crompond, but I'm really looking forward to seeing all that you'll continue to do. And to our high school engineering students, you're just so impressive. You really are. And when I, yes. As I went from table to table, I heard, well, we worked on the weekend to put this together, and we did this above and beyond. When you think about how busy a high school student is, and then you hear we spent our weekend working on improving this project, that's really special. That goes beyond a grade. That goes beyond some of the surface and topical items. That's true commitment. That's good character. That's just really impressive, just all around people that you are. So to our high school students, I mean it when I say thank you. You inspire me, you inspire us. I know my colleagues and I think about you with every decision that we make, and I'm just so proud of this moment and seeing the work that you've put in, just above and beyond. And this is just so above and beyond. So thank you to our high school students. And Crompond students, when you're sitting in the high school in the Engineering Club, I hope that you will pay it forward, and for the Crompond students who follow you, I hope that you'll be serving in the role as mentor at that time. So congratulations, well done. At this point, there are two additional recognitions that we'd like to celebrate this evening. We will make those two recognitions, and then we'll take a brief intermission. I know bedtimes are coming up for, for some, for the high schoolers, your nights just getting started with homework and, and all the other obligations that you have as students. So we have two more recognitions that we'd like to celebrate. The first is our Putnam Northern Westchester Bosie Student of Distinction, and for that, there is a brief video that has been prepared. So I'll ask Yvette, our district clerk, to play the video, please.
Good evening. It is with great pleasure that I join you to announce this month's recipient of the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosie Student of Distinction Award. This significant achievement is for students recognized by our staff for outstanding performance and personal growth. I also want to take a moment to thank you for your continued support. We value our relationship with your school district and look forward to continuing to serve your needs. And now for the Student of Distinction Award.
Good evening. I'm here to acknowledge Paddock as our Student of Distinction for the month of April from the Yorktown Central School District. Paddock is a student in our Child Development Program at Putnam Northern Westchester Bosie's Tech Center. At the Child Development Program, they learn all kinds of strategies in dealing with children from preschool all the way up to middle school. Paddock is a leader amongst his peers. He's a student that stands out and dedicated to his studies. He's an outstanding representative, and I'm proud to say that Paddock is our Student of Distinction from the Child Development Program from Putnam Northern Westchester Bosie's.
Congratulations to Paddock. I understand Paddock is in the audience this evening. Congratulations to you. I hear... Video was so good, we'll play it twice. So I understand that there is a future in elementary education. I'm wishing you well. We're all wishing you well. Congratulations to you, and we could not be more proud of your accomplishments. Well done. At this time, there is a second Student of Distinction that we would like to acknowledge. And there was some very special news that was shared with us. One of our high school freshmen, Chinmai Goyle, participated in the American Math Competition, the AMC 10, and earned a distinguished honor. And that distinguished honor means that you placed in the top 1% in the world on this mathematics assessment, and that is quite impressive. As someone who majored in math, I can tell you, I was never in that top 1% of performers in mathematics. I consider myself a competent mathematician, but not quite at that level. Very impressive. And in addition, Chinmai qualified for the American Invitational Mathematical Examination and was placed in the distinguished honor roll as well. So we are just so proud of Chinmai's accomplishment. We have a certificate that we've prepared. The board president and I have signed it, and it reads, "In recognition of your participation in the United States Mathematical Olympiad, earning distinguished honor roll in the American Math Competition AMC 10." Chinmai, come on up. Congratulations. Take a quick recess. At this point, the board will take just a very brief recess. It'll allow anyone who wants to depart for the evening to do so. If you choose to stick around, I'm giving a very exciting presentation on school safety. Chief Noble is here. He's joining us this evening, so you're welcome to stay, but otherwise, have a great evening. Get home safely. Thank you.
It's so great to be back. So awesome. Thank you.
Absolutely. Again, my thanks to Mr. DeGennaro, Dr. Roberts, Ms. Forsberg, their administrative teams, Mr. Miller, and everybody who was part of that, Mrs. Kivell, Mr. Bronzy. Just thank you so much to our wonderful staff for all of their efforts. Absolutely terrific. What a special night for us. We have another good news planned for May 9th. We will have members of our middle school first Lego We will have members of our middle school First Lego League team come out to present their design and that will be equally impressive. At this point, to continue on in the soup, I'm sorry.
Wait, I gotta, I gotta ask, Yvette, did anybody sign up for public comment number one?
No.
Okay, now you can continue.
Ah, yes. Very good, thank you, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to give my update. I'm going to start, if it's okay with the board, with the update on school safety. We have Chief Noble here. And I'd like to invite Chief Noble to the stage to join me in this presentation. If there are any questions that the board has at the end of the presentation, Chief Noble or I would be happy to answer them to the best of our ability. Thank you so much for joining us, Chief. So as our community is aware, we have forged a very special relationship with the Yorktown Police Department and that is largely due to the excellent leadership of Chief Noble and the department and just the wonderful staff that he has assembled in his department. Part of our presentation includes enhancing and increasing our partnership with the Yorktown Police Department. And we've asked Chief Noble to be here in the event that the board has any questions of the presentation and specifically the proposal that I'll be making this evening to the board. As you may recall, in previous budget presentations, we talked about security and earmarking some monies within our budget to address some of the security needs that we've identified, not only through hosting large-scale events, but just in the larger scale conversations that we've had, both Mr. Cole and I, Chief Noble and I, and members of our leadership team. So this evening, I wanted to provide our school board a little bit of context, our community with a little bit of context before speaking about some of the upgrades and enhancements that we're looking forward to for the 2022-23 school year. So Yvette, on the next slide, what our community will note, on all of our campuses, there are comprehensive safety and security measures that are in place. There are outdoor personnel, there are multiple checkpoints to gain access to our school buildings, there is a comprehensive training program that all staff undergo throughout the course of the year. We have various safety personnel outside of our campus, inside of our campuses. They're mobile, able to traverse the campus to identify any conditions that may need attention or may need escalation. We have recently revamped our security camera system. We have hundreds of security cameras so that if you come onto our campus, we have a line of vision and we have a very seamless mechanism to grant access to the police in the event of an emergency. We also have phone intercom systems that have been upgraded, remote intercom systems. So I've often been asked, well, Dr. Hatter, what are those codes that you carry on the back of your ID card? That's part of a comprehensive approach to safety where I'm able to communicate with our buildings remotely regardless of where I am. Obviously alarms, security hardware, visitor management system. One of the new things that we've added to our school district this year, and this was in consultation with Chief Noble, is campus mapping and gritting our campuses using numbers and letters so that if there, heaven forbid, there be some kind of event that warrants response from police departments from multiple jurisdictions, they can all understand the layouts of our building in a very time-efficient and smart way. So that's something that we had presented to the board, CRG mapping, we had presented to the board previously, and we have proceeded with that. That project is now complete. We have access now to all the maps. We've shared them with the police department, so our police department also has access to those maps. So on the next slide, what you'll see are the proposed security enhancements for the coming school year. And this is a comprehensive look. I will not be speaking about the third because if I shared with our community where the vulnerabilities are that we've identified, I'd be breaching some of the security measures that I probably should not be breaching. So we have identified some areas that could use some campus hardening or some enhancements to the facility and we'll be addressing that. The first item is the proposal of a school resource officer for Crompond School. And we've asked Chief Noble to be in attendance in the event that there are some questions that the board has. Either Chief Noble or I can answer them to the best of our ability. The school, as you know, we have a school resource officer at the high school who is absolutely terrific. We have a school resource officer at the middle school who is absolutely terrific. And what we're looking to do is have a school resource officer based out of Crompond School, but will have a modest role at Brookside and Mohansick. And I'll speak more to that on the next slide. And then we'll talk about also the district leasing of the Route 202 commuter parking lot property. That's something, that's a conversation that I would like to pursue further. Next slide, Yvette. With regard to the school resource officer, Chief Noble and I have discussed this plan in advance. I have great confidence in this being the next level of our work. School security is something that I believe our school district does really, really well. And I do view having a school resource officer available at Crompond, but available to the other elementary schools in the event of an emergency is just the next level of our work. So what will the school resource officer at Crompond do? Many things, many things. The first being a safety presence at Crompond. There is no greater deterrent than seeing that vehicle on our campus and that alone has been a very helpful piece in promoting a very safe atmosphere for our students. The school resource officer will engage with the Crompond students, whether it's during structured time in classrooms, whether it's teaching directly in the classroom, whether it's teaching side by side with a teacher, answering questions of students, bullying, cyberbullying, internet safety, responsible social media use, substance use and abuse, and just overall making smart choices. So we do view our police officers in the town of Yorktown as role models. We have many who coach sports at the varsity level, junior varsity level. We have police officers who advise clubs. So honestly, who better to assist us in this work at Crompond in terms of making smart choices and substance use and abuse and responsible social media use and bullying? They'll build positive relationships with our students. And I talked about some of the structured times, but also during the unstructured times. Arrival, dismissal, lunch, recess, those are some really important opportunities to build relationships. They'll serve on the building emergency response team and they'll serve on the emergency response team in all three buildings. The officer would not be responsible, just to clarify, for the training of staff. We have a relationship with PNW Bosie's School Safety Office and they will provide the training. However, the school resource officer would serve on the team of staff on the emergency response team. They would perform periodic campus checks and participate in our emergency drills, similarly to what our middle school and high school SRO do at this time. And then we'll talk about the, on the next slide, the 202 commuter lot. Again, the police have been absolutely wonderful in going into the parking lot. Many are familiar with the commuter lot. It's affectionately referred to as the C Lot. And it is technically off of campus. That is not district property, although it's adjacent to our high school campus and many of our high school students do park in that parking lot. With that not being a district property or a district leased property, we are limited with regard to application of the Code of Conduct and enforcement of the Code of Conduct and also monitoring the parking lot. So by having a, some kind of lease in place with the commuter lot, that is an avenue for us to enforce our Code of Conduct and put in some other safety measures. Next slide, Yvette. And this final slide, as I mentioned, I will not speak too much about because there are specific areas that we think that we can just strengthen and harden within our school. Hosting, I'll tell you, hosting the county championships was helpful because when you see an event of that size and with that many entrances and that many moving parts and being able to house one team here and another team there and the officials here in a media room and the Section 1 administrators in another room, there are a lot of moving parts. So that was really helpful to us to identify some areas that we can continue to improve on. And then finally, the last slide will say just the next steps. And there are just a couple of next steps. It's working with the town and our district, school district attorneys on the leased property. It's working with Chief Noble and his department with regard to the Crompond SRO, assuming that we'll move forward with that. Those would be our next steps. That concludes the update that I wanted to provide. There is so much more that goes into school security. I cannot possibly share everything that goes into our approach to school security in seven slides or in 10 slides or even in 50 slides. But I wanted to provide our board and our community with an overview of some of the experiences that you would have and interactions you'd have with our security protocols and systems while also having an eye toward the future and looking at areas that we can improve and get better and continue to grow. One of the trainings I attended shared, one of the instructors of a training I attended that someone who intends to harm, inflict harm on our schools has to get it right one time. We have to get it right every time when it comes to school safety and school security. And we're just so fortunate to have such great partners such as the Yorktown Police Department to help us to execute our mission. And I just want to shout out Mr. Cole because just about every security measure that you have seen in existence in this district are a result of Tom's efforts. So I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge what Tom has done for this district over the many years that he has been here because he has taken our school district just to that next level of safety and has just made it a place where, and the biggest endorsement that I can give you is my two children go to school here every day and I could not feel more comfortable sending them to our school buildings each day. So Tom, I just want to acknowledge and thank you for your work and your efforts. At this time, Chief Noble and I are here. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. And Chief, just thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking the time to, you're a busy person and I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. One more. There you go.
So now? Ah, that's a loop.
You're on, the world is hearing you, all of our viewers.
No, I thank you for the partnership. And during my tenure here, I've always offered, you know, anything I can do for the district. You know, if you're having that back to school night or anything in September or anywhere you think I could be of use to speak to the parents, you know, of the school district, I'd be happy to. You know, I thank you for the trust and confidence, you know, Joe DeGennaro as well for, you know, allowing us to have the law enforcement club here at the high school, which is, I think, the best attended extracurricular club in the high school. So again, it's just a chance for us to, you know, meet with the outstanding students of the high school. And, you know, like I'm apt to say, we learn, we learn from them and we try to answer their questions as to what questions they have about law enforcement in the community. And we get some pretty darn good questions. And it's kind of nice. It's, you know, I'm, as you know, and you're stuck, I have a lot of mundane things. I just, I've loved being a cop my whole life and, you know, we have a lot of policy now and procedures to deal with. So any chance that I have selfishly to get out and meet with the kids, it's time well spent.
Love it. Thank you, thank you, Chief. At this time, if there are any questions that members of the board have, please, you're welcome to ask them at this point.
Lisa, did you have a question?
I do. First, I want to just echo Dr. Hatter's sentiments about Tom Cole. He's really brought us a long way in the security of our buildings and our kids. So thank you for that because, you know, my kids went through here too. I still have one here and I feel confident as well that my kids are safe. In fact, back when Sandy Hook happened, my daughter Julie was at Mohansick and, you know, we cried, but she said to me, Mrs. Barry would never let something like that happen to us. And I thought, those are big shoes for Mrs. Barry, that little lady, to fill. But the fact that my daughter felt that safe in the building is a big compliment to all of you, so thank you. Chief Noble, thank you for joining us tonight.
My pleasure.
So an SRO in an elementary school, I feel like needs to be a very special type of person who can relate to the kids, but also be a disciplinarian and, you know, kind of like the buddy, I guess. Do you have someone in mind? And if not, how do you go about selecting someone for that?
I'm fortunate because I'm surrounded by excellent people at the Yorktown Police Department. I have several candidates that I could put in that school tomorrow and they do an excellent job. And not so much really that role at that level, they're not really disciplinarians. They are there to build relationships. I mean, that's, that's what I set out to do every day is either improve existing relationships or build new ones. And, you know, the officer in that school will have a chance. And the nice thing is, as a community, and I've said this because on the other side of town, they do have the elementary school SROs and they love them. They're a big part of the schools and a big part of the school culture. And it actually gives the children of the school, the students, a chance to form their own relationships with members of law enforcement and not rely on, you know, what they may see on TV or anything like that. It gives them a chance to, you know, say hello, give a pound, you know, a hi. And hopefully, once the children of Crompond School leave that school and head to Mildred Strang, they'll be looking for Officer Monday if he's still, if he's still over there if we're fortunate enough that he's still there.
I sure hope so. I sure hope so. We love him.
You and me both. But, you know, for me, that's, that's the nicest part. I mean, safety and security is paramount and I believe that once my officers went into the elementary school, any school, it's things that they will pick up on and they'll do it in a friendly way. They'll say, hey, look, don't chalk that door open. This is where I see a little bit of a problem here. You talk about hardening in this setting. Well, the officer's going to be there every day and they're going to know that school backwards and forwards in a very short time. And they're going to, that culture of safety is going to be done in a friendly way, but it's going to improve the safety and security of the students and of the campus. And while there is, you know, I saw your bullet points and we agree, and it is in the contract that we do have with the Lakeland Central School District for the elementary schools. But this program works best when the SRO and the principal collaborate on their vision of that school and how they're going to set about making that program work. And the officer primarily will be in Crompond. You know, the officer will get a chance to meet and chat with, you know, the principals of Brookside and Mohansick and assist with the safety and security. But I think the footprint for that officer will be, it's probably where it should be with the setup of your elementary schools with, you know, the Crompond, Crompond kids. It's my goal, I hope to be able to. You know, I still have one more on the other side of town to send, because I do like to send all of them to Dare School if there are openings and I do have the ability to do so and not, and not have too many vacancies to cover because it is a two-week school and to send two officers out there, it's a little difficult, but that's my goal. If you do want to go this year and start in September, my goal would be to send the officer to Dare School in January. And if I couldn't get him in there in January 23, they absolutely would be in there in January 24. I do, I believe they only have the school once per year and it's up in Montour Falls, New York. And in January, it's, not too balmy up there. But no, I have, I have, I'm blessed to have excellent candidates to put in, to place in Crompond School.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes, I have a question on, we have two outstanding SROs, you know, Officer Monday and Officer Door. And you're right, the after-school law enforcement club. I look at the yearbook picture and I think to myself, how do they even get all the students in there because it's unbelievable? So that is such a wonderful thing for us to see. And they've been with us for so long. My daughter is 22 years old and we've had the same SRO since she was in kindergarten. Not that she was in middle school and kindergarten, but I know that they've been here for quite a while. So now that we're hiring a new SRO, do you have any advice on how we would integrate that person into Crompond?
Again, that's the collaboration between the administrative, you know, Dr. Roberts and her team and that officer. I think once we identify the officer, we make introductions and, you know, like I said, we're going to give that officer a foundation of the SRO program and how we envision it. They'll have a copy of the contract because not so much the X's, the business part of it, but the foundation of it, the, you know, the safety and how we want that SRO to be able to talk to the students about. You had mentioned it earlier, decision-making. That's what, that's what it boils down to. And there are some, you know, our SROs tell us, there are certain things that children will talk to that SRO about that they're not really talking to their parents about, you know, sometimes. And to build that comfort level also and to have the trust of staff as well. I think that's, that's the crucial part of it in the beginning, is to get the mutual trust that we're all on the same page and we're all going in the same direction. And then the rest, usually it flows. It flows very well. The SRO has an excellent relation, all of mine have an excellent relationship with the staff here, you know, at Yorktown and over on the other side of town as well. And that's a key component. That can't be overlooked. We can have all the policies and procedures in the world, but if that SRO and that administrator aren't really in lockstep on how things are going to be done at that school, you know, that would be a challenge to the success. But thankfully, that has not happened. It has been overwhelmingly, you know, and I speak to the principals and, you know, I ask, I said, hey, how are you? Chief, you'd have to fight. You'd... You'd have to fight me to take that SRO out of the school. And it's unanimous, and it speaks, I think it speaks well of my staff and also that the administrators and the staff of each of those respective schools, they've taken the time to build that relationship and to get to know that SRO. And the nice part about it selfishly is when you see these incidents where there is, you know, not so much lockdowns, but we've had lockouts recently. And there's an officer in that school, your parents, you know, that brings another, another level of, you know, okay, you know, Officer D or Officer Mike or Officer, you know, whoever is in that school, and my child is going to be okay. And that, to me, is, and that's the feedback I get because I am a local resident and I am out and about quite a bit, and I speak to people in the community. And it's just been, it's been a winner, this program.
I absolutely agree. Absolutely. I share the same feelings as a parent. I still have a child here. And there's no doubt when you know that there's some sort of a lockout or, you know, situation, whatever it may be, but to know that we have one of the officers in the building, it's really, gives a little bit more peace of mind. So, thank you.
Yeah. And it's important to realize as well that, and, because, you know, the disciplinarian, that SRO, I can tell you, in one of the elementary schools, the principal was, had a great plan for children who weren't behaving probably as well as the others. They made the carrot that if that student was, stepped up that behavior, he or she got to spend time with, with the SRO. They blocked out 30 minutes or whatever it was. And they got to spend time to go to the SRO's office and meet with Officer D and talk with them. And it's really, you know, it's like, that's what I mean with the, whatever the principal and the staff, you know, want to come up with, you know, my people, when you get into this profession, you need to be a good communicator and you need to be flexible. You can't be rigid. And anybody that I put into those schools, they're, they're very, very flexible.
Terrific.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Rashmi?
Thank you, Chief, for joining us tonight. I think our partnership with the police department is just exceptional.
Oh, thank you.
And we thank you for that. So I have a question about the, the SROs in, the SRO in Crompond and then, you know, our middle school and high school ones. Do you see a difference in what they might be, you know, dealing with or working on? So, you know, with cyberbullying and substance abuse and just, you know, safe internet use. So there's a whole gamut of things, but I'm just wondering if there are some that are more pertinent maybe to the younger children than the older children?
Well, there is. It is a different component in the elementary school. And that's why, if you recall, that's when I moved Dare to the eighth grade, was we needed to have conversations about real events that we couldn't have with children when they were in fifth grade. But I think the SRO is really going to come in handy because with social media and the children, you know, being on their phones or, you know, the challenges are very real, whether it's bullying, whether it's, and the decision-making, you know, is critical. So that elementary school SRO has to be able to, number one, build that relationship, you know, get the kids' trust. And then they will have the background to be able to speak to, hey, you know what, this is, this is risky behavior in social media, you shouldn't be sending any pictures, you know, whatever curriculum that we come up with, and we do have it, because we still do have that fifth-grade Dare component and that model. Detective Finn's still there. We do have SROs that have attended Dare that are, you know, working on the other side of town. So we do share the curriculum amongst the SROs. So whoever goes into that school will have that Dare model without even having attended Dare School. And that's pretty much, that's the foundation that we try to build when we go, when we go into an elementary school. Because yes, the conversations are quite different. And, you know, that's the challenge for, for, that's the biggest challenge for the officer is that they're not dealing with high school kids and middle school kids that may be a little bit wiser. You know, our kids in fourth, fifth grade, and especially the lower levels, the innocence is there. I mean, yes, they're stumbling upon things that may be above their pay grade, but the innocence is still there. So yes, and that's what the officer will, will understand when they, when they enter into Crompond.
Yeah, and I think having that, as you said, I think having that relationship is key. And sometimes, you know, we have families with children across multiple buildings, so they, you know, they see the bigger picture as well. Both my kids are here in the high school, and my son goes to law enforcement meetings, and he really looks forward to it.
Yeah.
So thank you for everything.
Yeah. We have an outstanding meeting coming this week. I have the bomb squad coming in on Thursday to speak with the kids.
Oh, wow. Can I come?
Yeah, come on in. Yeah. They're going to have their incident command truck out here. So it'll be about 20 minutes in the classroom, and then the students will get to go outside and, and check out the truck, the robotics that they use to detect, you know, hazardous devices. And I believe the, they love the K9s anyway, and the bomb-sniffing dog will be here as well. So, yeah, I invite you to, if you'd like to come to one of the meetings.
Yes, I'll get you the information.
Come on in.
It's a fun time.
So I have a quick story, and then I have a question. And Tom Cole's going to be the only one up here who's going to remember it. Years ago, when we were going through serious budget issues and we had to keep cutting and cutting and cutting, and the principals at the high school and the middle school were told they had to cut stuff from the budget, and the one thing they absolutely refused to give up was the SRO. Do you remember that, Tom? They would give up anything else, but they would not give up the SROs. That's how much they've meant over the years to Yorktown.
Sure.
So we do thank you so much. Can you tell me a little bit about, is there specific training that the SROs go through? It's not just any officer. They are specifically trained for this type of a program? How does that work?
Well, first, the most important part on our end is that the officer has to demonstrate an interest in doing this type of work. The SRO position is not for anyone, everyone. And I commend, I, you know, Rob Door and Brian Monday to have spent as many years as they have in a school setting. It's, it really is special. They enjoy their work and they love their work. And we interview our officers. If you demonstrate an interest, you submit a memorandum as to why you're interested in this position, we review those. And then my command staff and I will interview the officers. And we do have structured questions that we do ask. And, you know, we do try to identify the component of the job and what is expected and that this is a big commitment, that you're not taking this job just because it's a great schedule, which it is. You know, if you're taking the job for the schedule, you're doing yourself a disservice. You're doing my, you know, the police department a disservice, and most importantly, doing the students and the staff at that school a disservice if you're taking the job for that reason. And I think we've gotten it, I know we've gotten it right, because the officers that we've placed in the other schools, they've, they've shined through the interview process. And the person that we ultimately decide on, yes, they get the foundation, they will get that, that fifth-grade Dare-type curriculum that we do have, you know, the paperwork. They will speak with their peers, will set them up, you know, with the other SROs. If we can determine this person, you know, we get the commitment, the contracts are signed, and we're off and running before the end of this school year, what we try to do is find this person and maybe send them to an elementary school with one of my other SROs, to have them shadow, you know, that SRO and to see what that typical day, you know, is like. Those are some of the things that we, that go into our decision-making model as to who a good fit for that school will be. And it's not, it's not, it's not just based on seniority or other things, you know, it's, this type of position, it's, it's got to be someone who really wants to be a school resource officer and commit to working with children and educators.
The one thing I will add is Chief Noble and I speak fairly regularly, or will communicate fairly regularly. What I will tell you is I have complete confidence and trust in whoever Chief selects for us because he knows us. He knows our school district. He knows all of the personalities. He knows what my standards are. He knows what your standards are. And the only person who has higher standards is Chief. So I believe that whomever is selected to be in our school building will be dynamite.
I think that of all the positions that we have put into the district, this is one of the most valuable ones. And I, I am so supportive of adding this in. I think it does such a service to our students to be able to have that community connection to our officers as young as possible. It just, it just builds a stronger community when everybody knows each other and likes each other and can relate to each other. So I am just so excited that we have the opportunity if the community supports our budget to be able to do this.
I couldn't agree with you more, and I thank you for your trust and confidence. And, you know, the product speaks for itself. We've, we just keep adding more SROs. It's something we are doing right. We're building those relationships, and the officers that go into that school, they know. I mean, what I've said about, and I said it to you, we, we pretty much came into our positions right around the same time, Dr. Hatter, right in 2016. And we had the conversations, and I had him on the other side of town as well, that one of my primary goals was to, you know, we've had the very good relationship, and my goal was to improve it. And that this is a relationship, you know, with the school districts in this town that I, that I greatly value. And, you know, as the children, as the students transition through their, you know, their journey here at the, at the school, I'd like them to come out, and many of them do, and they'll see us out in the community, they'll say hello, and they're not, there's not that trepidation about seeing a uniform and that's, those are some of the things that, you know, we're getting right in this town. And this is another step in that direction, is to, you know, to expose the kids to the Yorktown, the Yorktown Police Officers and their community. And I think, you know, that, it's just a nice, it really is a nice thing to do, and it breaks down those walls, I think. And I could, you said, very well said. I couldn't agree more.
Thank you. And I also want to thank you. Every time we have asked for your help, you have just said, what do you need? And we so appreciate that commitment and that you've given us whatever we need, and we thank you, Thor.
No, absolutely. You're very welcome. And it's, it's an easy thing to do. And, you know, school safety, I, I sleep very, very good at night. And this is the, this is one of the things, though, at the top of the list, because it's just, you mentioned Sandy Hook. It's, it's just so difficult to recover when you have a traumatic incident at a school. And it's something that, you know, we'd never want to see happen, but we want to be very, very prepared in order to combat that. And I commend you for jumping on CRG. I think that was, that presentation I attended was excellent, and I think that's going to save, you know, valuable minutes and seconds by implementing the, that mapping. And I believe, since you have that mapping, our in-service training right now, we're working with Trish Harris to try to secure the school because we want to do our active-shooter, you know, training, our in-service training.
Absolutely.
And utilize that CRG mapping, incorporate that into our training in June. That's, that's our goal of this year. So that was a job well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Chief, thank you so much.
Before I go.
Yes, sir.
On this thing, I also want to thank Tom Cole. No, we've worked, we've worked well for many years, Tom, and we've had an excellent relationship. And you always, you always understood where we were coming from. And we definitely did with you. I think we worked well in tandem. And I also agree with what Dr. Hatter said. When you enter into this campus, the layers of security that you have, they're strong, and it's very well done. So I thank you for, you know, your partnership and the teamwork that we've, that we've had through your run, and I wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you, Chief. I do appreciate that. But the board, Jackie will know this, are, the foundation for everything we've done was made available to us through the resources through your department. And I've known you for many, many years now, many more than I'd like to admit. And you've never said no. You provided us with the, with the safety officer. We did our initial training here in the school district way back in the day. So this has been a true collaboration. And I think what you're seeing right here is this relationship bearing fruit over the years, and now it's become part of our culture and an expectation. So we thank you and we thank your entire department for all the time and resources you've spent on us here in York.
Thank you very much. Best of luck. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you so much.
Dr. Hatter, thank you very much, as always.
Thank you.
Ladies, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a great night.
So what I will, what I'll also share, I think it's important for our board and for our community to hear this. When I was coordinating schedules with Chief Noble, I told him that the students were going to present at seven, and we would start at 7:30 our presentation. And Chief's response is, I'll be here at seven. He wanted to see our students presenting and our students' work, and I just think that just speaks volumes to the relationship there and certainly to our chief. So with regard to some other updates that I'd like to provide the board and to our community, just an update, we continue with the assistant superintendent search. We have interviews scheduled for this week. Interviews are continuing into this week, so more information to come on that. It is a very rigorous process and very big shoes to fill. So it should be a very rigorous process. So more information to come. With regard to the book review, our website continues to be updated. So as new reports are generated, new determinations are made, our website is the best place to go to access any of the information with regard to the book review. And finally, and just to close out, just to say congratulations again to the student recognitions tonight. Chinmai Goyle, we don't often invite students to the board meeting. I think it's something I'd like to do moving forward with more regularity and celebrate students of distinction because there are wonderful things happening in our school district, absolutely amazing things that are happening in our school district. A lot of it's thanks to the leadership of the board. And what her accomplishment was, was nothing short of spectacular. To finish amongst the top in the world is certainly worthy of celebration. So I'm honored that Chinmai got to come out and be recognized for just an outstanding, outstanding achievement. That concludes my report this evening. I appreciate the time to present. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to go on to board action items. You guys are okay? Again, a motion to approve the minutes of the March 21st meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. A motion to approve the treasurer's report for March 22.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. And a motion to approve the extra classroom report for March 22.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We're up to board reports. Policy Committee, Cheryl.
Sure. The Policy Committee last met on April 8th. At that meeting, we reviewed four policies, and we are continuing to review the Code of Conduct, as everyone realizes, I think, at this point, that it's a very lengthy document. So it's, it'll take us some time to thoroughly get through it. And our next meeting is on May 6.
Okay. I just want to thank you and Lisa because the Code of Conduct is really, really tough. And with both of you having students in the high school, it helps to go through a lot of the practicality of it. So thank you both for all of that hard work.
My pleasure.
Absolutely.
Fiscal advisory. Mike is not here tonight. I don't know, Tom, is there another fiscal advisory meeting set up? We're going to wait till the end of the year?
No, the next one will be this summer. The final legislative budget didn't change state aid enough to warrant a discussion.
Okay. Audit Committee, Rashmi?
So the Audit Committee will be meeting next month for two reasons. One is to set some dates and get things going for next year's audit cycle, especially with Tom's upcoming retirement.
upcoming retirement, so we're trying to get started a bit ahead of time. And also to kind of finalize this year's cycle and set dates for fall for the auditor to come present to the board. So we will be meeting next month.
Terrific. And steering continues to meet at this point every other week. We are focused on making sure we have everything in place before school construction starts this summer. We just, especially with supply chain issues, we're making sure all of the contractors have all of the large items in stock, in their shop or in, short on our campus before they can start working. Just a reminder, the work that is going to be done is the middle school gym gets a refresh with floors, wall pads, hoops, AC and heating is going in there. The high school cafeteria is getting new AC along with ceilings and lights. Crompond Cafeteria is getting a, a really nice fresh update, including air conditioning along with their gym will get air conditioning. Brookside and Mohansik's Cafeteria and Gym get air conditioning. And also where we are doing some of the work, especially in the gyms, we're trying to update the lightings to more efficient LEDs to help with some of the efficiencies that we can. And so that's what we're doing there. Okay, we're going to go to Policies. A motion to delete the following regulation from the Policy Manual, it is 0115R Student Harassment and Bullying Prevention and Intervention Regulation.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? And then we have a first read on the following policy and that is 0115 Student Harassment and Bullying Prevention and Intervention. Did anybody have any questions?
No questions.
All right. The reason we deleted the regulation was we incorporated it into the full policy. Personnel Agenda. Upon recommendation of the Superintendent, a motion that the following be approved under certified personnel, we have a part-time appointment, an extra compensation, there's extra duty, we have summer K-5 remedial program, we have volunteers, unpaid leave of absence, resignation for the purpose of retirement, additional resignations, a removal from the substitute list and under classified personnel, we have an addition to the substitute list.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Ron, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, you know, it's bittersweet to see Carol Fernacano retiring as CTA from Crompond. Carol has spent 20 years in the district and if anyone who has stepped foot into Crompond, specifically in the cafeteria and admires the bulletin boards, that's Carol's work and she will be missed. She has been such an important member of the Crompond faculty and staff.
Anybody remembers?
So we wish her well.
If anybody remembers their, the, what, the encampment?
Yes.
All of the uniforms are Carol.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome, all right. Budget transfers, Mrs. Love, it's budget transfers, a motion to approve the budget transfers that are listed below.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? An amendment to the Pitney Bowes lease, a motion to amend the 16-month lease agreements with Central Administration and PPS posted machines as follows, the per-month cost for each machine is now $301.70, it was previously $304. Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative Number 011322PIT, the Board of Education authorizes and empowers the Board President to execute said contract.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Health and Welfare, a motion to approve the contract for Health and Welfare Services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other districts for the 2122 school year, this is for Greenberg and Lakeland.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A motion to approve the Precision Roofing Agreement based upon the Ed Data Bid Package Number 30 to provide emergency roof repair at Yorktown High School for the remaining 50% of the gym roof.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Whereas pursuant to the Requirement of Education Law Section 3012D and Part 33, 30-3 of the Rules of the Board of Regents, the individuals named below have completed the necessary training to be recertified as lead evaluators of classroom teachers. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby ratifies the following individuals as lead evaluator, lead evaluator of classroom teachers. And we have also lead evaluators of building principals listed below as well.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A motion to approve the following Yorktown Congress of Teachers Professional Improvement Proposals and the Yorktown Congress of Teachers, why do I have two of them? Oh, one for the 2122 school year, one for the 2223 school year. Thank you.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A motion to approve the following placements as of April 25th, 2022.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? The Brookline Center for Community Mental Health for Professional Development and Network Opportunities in the Area of Multi-Tierred Systems, what are we approving? The contract is for $4,000 for April 18th to the, to June 30th, the costs are paid by a federal grant and we have a second one that is a contract for $15,000 for July 1st to June 30th, 2023.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? A motion to accept the following gifts, grants and donations with gratitude at Brookside Schools, $1,788 from the PTA for the first grade to attend Dr. Seuss at Yorktown stage and $1,653 from the PTA for the third grade class to visit the Bronx Zoo.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? We're up to Board Comments. Rashmi?
Well, today was just such an exciting evening, it's great to have Good News back and see your students. I think when we thought of E-Steam as a framework going back five years ago, it was a dream. It was an ambition and it was a dream that we had, but I think today we really saw what it was about. The ability of our high school engineering students to be able to connect and collaborate with kids that are six, eight years younger than them, I think was just, you know, exceptional. And, and just walking around and seeing some of the projects, I have no doubt that those Kivelllanders, as they call themselves, are, are the future, they are our future leaders. So it was really, really nice to have them. Kudos to our administrators, of course, Mr. DiGennaro, Dr. Roberts, I see Mr. Miller here, you know, your efforts collectively, I think, are, are amazing. And Mrs. Forsberg, Amanda Burns was here earlier, and none of this happens without you, Dr. Hatter, so thank you.
Cheryl?
I echo Rashmi's comments. It was, it was quite a night, it was really exciting to have all that energy back here to see the collaboration between the, the high school and Crompond, to see the collaboration among the students at Crompond and among the students at, at the high school level. I, I heard three terms in one sentence that Ms. Kivell had said and she mentioned PBL, SEL and E-Steam. And for those of you who probably not, don't necessarily speak the pedagogical jargon, it, it was actually really nice to hear because we hear a lot about SEL, social emotional learning these days because of, a lot of it is recovering from COVID and how it affects the learning, the social emotional piece affects the learning and E-Steam, I hope everyone knows what the acronym stands for at this point. But PBL, Project-Based Learning, is something we haven't heard about as much because COVID, I think, took a big chunk of that away. So it was so nice, I think that was the term that I was so excited to hear, we're able to, to put the students back into groups, we're able to work together a little bit more closely than six feet apart. So it was really exciting and the, the connection between all three, it, it was just a phenomenal event tonight. So thank you to Crompond, thank you to the high school and thank you to everyone who was involved in today because it was really quite a spectacular event tonight.
Lisa?
Yeah, so, Good News is my favorite part of these board meetings and to hear what these students did in their collaboration, it was every level. It was Ms. Forsberg with the IT putting it together, so thank you for that. I heard about transportation, coordinating the Crompond kids over here to the high school. It was the administrators, it's our, our, our superintendents, it was so many levels, the teachers, where everybody just worked together and then of course the kids, like Rashmi said, that they could blend together and help each other out and it, it just, it was so wonderful. You know, we have the, the election coming up on May 17th and the budget vote and Rashmi, Cheryl and I are running and people ask, you know, it's a volunteer job, why do you do it? That's why. That's why we do it.
Thank you. One of the best things is we model behavior for kids and what we saw tonight from the adults was how you model behavior to get the kids to collaborate and it was a collaboration between two buildings which is, logistically is almost impossible in a lot of ways, but everybody did it. And they showed the kids that it could be done and I think that was an important lesson for both the high school and the elementary school to see too. So it was just a phenomenal night and I can't wait to see what else you have in store for Good News Force. I also want to thank Chief Noble for coming, he spent quite a bit of time with us tonight and I appreciate all of his expertise and his knowledge and his guidance in helping us to move forward with security. He's always been a wonderful resource, so I thank him and I thank his officers for coming out every single meeting whenever we ask, so it's a wonderful police force and we thank them. Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything?
So I do want to, everyone, you know, certainly praised those who brought tonight together. This doesn't happen without the going above and beyond of our two teachers, Ms. Kivell and Mr. Bronzy. What they did and their, and with their students really took a lot of outside work, outside of the school day, outside their typical planning, so kudos to them for taking an idea that we have and we initiate from, you know, sitting in our office and they turn it into a very practical, very educational experience for our students. And I do just want to share that, you might have heard Mrs. Kivell say that she touches on different content areas within this unit. She has masterfully connected standards in all of our content areas in this interdisciplinary unit, so, you know, they talked about writing, they've calculated, they've done calculations for math, she has touched every core area of our curriculum in this project, so there's no missing certain content areas while they're doing this, she's ingrained and integrated it, so it's, it's, kudos to both of them and their, their efforts were so much appreciated.
You good? Anybody else? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Good night, everyone.
Good night.